2024, if we could rise for the pleasure of allegiance. Senator Weber, would you lead us, sir?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. Madam Clerk, would you call roll, please?
Sakura.
Here.
Turenzi.
Here.
O'Donnell.
Here.
Deion.
Here.
Ryan.
Here.
Robinson.
Here.
Mayor Calendrino.
Here, all present, and we have a quorum. At this time in the meeting, we open up the floor to the public. Anyone that would like to address counsel, you'll be given three minutes. This, at this time, it would be for any item listed on the agenda. There'll be another period towards the end of the meeting for items that are not on the agenda. Is anyone in the audience wanting to address counsel? All right. Next is consent business. We do have two amendments. One, we're adding Lions Club request for placement of signs. Madam Clerk, if we can make that item Roman numeral five, C1. And Ms. McGee, you had an amendment as well?
Yeah, I propose a motion to amend the agenda so that we add an item right before the ward of the marijuana licenses, just to do some minor cleanup work on the ordinance before the licenses are awarded.
So we could call that, I guess, CA or?
Correct. Or?
Or B.
One?
B dot one, I guess?
Yes, that works.
B dot.
We should put that in form of motion, too, if somebody wants to?
We are.
Oh, make a motion to make the changes as presented.
Support.
Motion by Sakura, support by Turenzi, any discussion? Madam Clerk, a roll call vote, please.
Sakura.
Yes.
Turenzi.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deion.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Mayor Calendrino.
Yes, motion carries. So I would be looking for a motion to approve consent business with the two changes noted.
So moved.
Support.
Motion by Deion, support by Turenzi, any discussion from counsel? Madam Clerk, a roll call vote, please.
Sakura.
Yes.
Turenzi.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deion.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Mayor Calendrino.
Yes, motion carries. Thank you, everyone. No unfinished business or correspondence, moving on to new business. Tonight, we're honored to have our state senator, Mr. Michael Weber, here to give us a state legislative update.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, City Council and members of the audience. My name is Michael Weber, and I do serve as the District Nine State Senator, which includes Utica, Sterling Heights, Shelby Township, Greater Rochester area, Troy, and, yeah, I already included Oakland Township and the Greater Rochester area. So, you know, my background, again, was City Council, and so I try to do these legislative updates thinking about what you would want to think of when you're, you know, in your role as a City Council person. So the update from when I was here back in the spring is, obviously, we have passed our budget now. It did go into effect October 1st. And it did, what ended up happening on the revenue sharing was it did, there was a combined 13.6% increase in state revenue sharing. We, so far, we're still working on, and I'll have an update on that a little bit later, but we are still working on trying to get that revenue sharing trust fund legislation done. We're trying to actually get it into the budget in terms of, like, how it would work in the budget process and then pass the statutory later. And we were not able to do so in this budget. However, the statutory, the bills passed with over 104, 105 votes or whatever in the State House. So we're hoping we can still do that yet this year. In terms of direct appropriations, and I know Mayor and Council know, but just to kind of reiterate, in terms of Utica, you know, working with the House and the Senate, we were able to get some money for ambulance replacement, fire and EMT radios, and then some police equipment. So overall, it was, you know, close to about $1 million overall. And again, that's the work of, you know, trying to work with the House and the Senate, trying to do it on bipartisan basis to, you know, get some of those dollars coming from Lansing back into the communities that we represent. Terms of infrastructure, you know, the roads were a focus, but not as much of a focus as I would like to have seen. But we did have a $36 million increase in terms of the Act 51 formula money. We did have to take some money from General Fund to, as I've talked about in the past, we're paying off debt in terms of some of these bonds that have been going on over the years. And so that takes away from our road funding money in that particular year. So we had to move some General Fund dollars over just to even get our federal match. And so in the future, we're going to have to really work on that and try to figure that out. But at least we were able to get the federal matching funds, which is important as some of that, some of that road funding money is out there at the federal level. In terms of the Revenue Sharing Trust Fund, I did cover that a little bit. There is a separate, and you'll see some stuff in the, in, maybe MML will cover it and some of that kind of stuff, but there's also a somewhat competing, somewhat not competing, but like, trust fund as it relates to public safety funds. And I think it'll be interesting to see how that gets dispersed. We're going to be doing a vote on the statutory piece of that, but that is in the budget. And I think the concern, perhaps, is that that may go to a lot larger cities than, like, the city of Utica or even some of the other cities that I represent. And so, whereas the Revenue Sharing Trust Fund would, I think, help all communities. And so everybody supports some public safety, and so I think that will happen, but we're also pushing for the revenue sharing component as well. And again, it's just to try to create some of that certainty with our revenue sharing dollars going forward, so it's not subject to the whim of appropriations all the time. No new developments on my Senate Bill 643 dealing with the sound wall mitigation. But just to remind the council, I did introduce that based on a law that the state of Minnesota has, and that would be, if it passes, we would put money into that fund, and then communities could, you know, apply for that, and it would be areas that didn't qualify for the federal funding on the sound walls. And so I know there's some interest in Utica, as we've talked about in the past, and so it'll keep you apprised of that. And then lastly, and I know, you know, our downtown here, you know, restaurants and different shops and this and that, a lot of conversation the last two months or so about restaurants and the future of restaurants in terms of the Supreme Court decision and the eventual elimination, potentially, of the tipped wage and what that would do to impact restaurants and bars. We've been pushing for a bipartisan solution on that, to try to keep that. As we know, 83% of the workers in that industry would like to keep that type of, that type of wage. And so we're trying to work on it. We know February 21st, 2025 is the first time it's going to start to kind of phase in, and it's going to go through 2029 where that would, the tipped wage part would be completely phased out. And so, again, hearing from a lot of the restaurants and a lot of different things, there is also other components to that, too, including, like, paid sick leave and a minimal wage increase, which affects a broader amount of businesses. And there's coalitions on all those issues to try to see if the legislature can kind of come to a bipartisan compromise on some of that to help our small businesses, to help our restaurants and bars. And so I'm advocating for some changes, and I guess we'll see where that goes. And then lastly, I know you guys have a long meeting, but for residents here and at home, for more information, sign up for our monthly e-news. You can visit SenatorMichaelWeber.com or call our office at 517-373-0994. And I can take any questions you guys have.
Thank you, Senator. I'm glad you brought up the sound wall legislation, because I continue to get quite a few calls about that, what the status is. Is there any info I can give to the residents when they call about that?
Well, you know, we, it was re-refered to the Appropriations Committee, which is where we wanted it to go originally. It was, started off in a different committee, and so we've had some good conversations with the Chair, Sarah Anthony, about it and the need for it. And frankly, she was instrumental in us getting some money for sound wall for Troy. You know, so I think she understands, you know, the issue a little bit more than some, and, but we're working through it. And I think if it's something that doesn't happen in the final three months of this session, it can be something that gets reintroduced when we start our next session in January. So, but we're, yeah, we're continuing to push forward on it and appreciate the residents' engagement on it.
Does anyone else on council have any questions for Senator Weber? Thanks for coming out, Senator.
Thank you.
We really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is dumpster location agreement for Mr. Miguel's. What they are proposing is the use of city property, this is right behind their restaurant and bar, to build a dumpster enclosure to bring them into city code compliance. It's on that grassy area directly behind the neighbor's dumpster pad. There is a drawing in your packet, and it's a little bit raw. There's a little bit more definitive color version of what they're proposing that was left for you by the madam clerk. So if you look on the color drawing, you'll see in the, in the left column on the bottom, it's that area all the way north on that green pad. So what we need to do is, I guess, we don't have a contract created yet.
No, we don't have a contract created, but once, assuming this passes by council, I need to know exactly what the rate would be that we're charging for that licensing of that property. And then I can turn around a contract, just authorize me at the same time to draft up that contract, and we can have that signed by the end of the week.
I know the property owner came to me and asked if we, if the city would be willing to sell that property. In my conversation with him, I said that I would not support selling it, because if, in the future, the city did, you know, 20 years from now, 30 years from now, did have some development plans for that parking lot, that would kind of lock us out of being able to do anything. I said I personally would be able to support a lease, even a long-term lease, as long as there was a clause that we could get out of that lease, should something come up, you know, development-wise. So I would definitely recommend that we put some kind of clause in the agreement that, you know, would allow the city, you know, three months or so, whatever we can come to agreement on. But, yeah, I think we need to come to some kind of agreement of what the, the number of years that we would be looking or willing to lease that property for and a price point for that.
Mayor, I believe I'm going to draft as a license agreement, so for today's purposes, let's just refer to it as an agreement as opposed to a lease.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor? Sir, I'd be willing to make a motion to authorize the mayor, under the guidance of the city attorney, to enter into a license agreement with the proprietor of Mr. Miguel's to allow usage of the city property, as noted in the, in the drawing here, for future use, as stated.
Can we just call it an agreement?
They say lessons? They say something else?
No, let's call it.
I'll defer to the city attorney.
I'm going to have to write this so I don't keep saying the wrong words. I've got it written and underlined in my notes. Before we make a motion, do we have any, any input on how long of an agreement?
We have motion on the floor, so we leave a second.
I don't think it's a discussion.
But then we'd have to make, I guess, another motion to determine the years and the price point.
Correct.
So Councilman Deion has a?
I'll withdraw, I'll withdraw my motion, sir, so, for the purpose of conversation.
Okay.
Question, are we talking about 12 by 14 area as the top picture, or are we talking the 14 by 17 area in the bottom picture?
I have to confirm. I don't know why the contract submitted this, I don't know why it has a different number in the bottom, but I'll confirm the size.
As far as an agreement?
I think one is the, could one be the pad and one be the actual enclosure?
I think you're right, yes, he did make it larger so that the dumpster could go on to the pad, thank you. That's what I think. The pad is 14 by 17. The gate around the dumpsters is all but worth it.
And in case anyone doesn't know, this is Mr. Steve Savage, he is the owner of Mr. Miguel's. Any ideas about a term, how many years?
Would it be a renewable agreement?
I would say so.
You're thinking about a 10-year, 10-year agreement, so we don't have to revisit so often? Is that reasonable to counsel?
I'm fine with that.
So I just have a couple of questions. So this is obviously driven, not by me, but by the city to take our property into current, whatever code it is currently for the dumpsters. That being said?
I think you should probably go to the podium, so we, so we get this on the cable broadcast.
Okay, I just wanted to say, this is being driven by the city, not myself, to bring our property up to code on a dumpster enclosure. That being said, if, you know, there's no, there's really no value in this to me whatsoever. I'm doing it to appease the city. That being said, if we're looking at that parcel of land and there's any substantial numbers on that lease, I would not support that, and I would look for an alternative at that point. The other thing is, if this is at whatever timeframe it's going to be, again, I'm doing this to bring my property up to code, so if you say in 10 years you want that property, let's just start over and find a piece that works. I'll put it behind the coffee house at that point. I mean, that's not, I'm not looking to?
Are you looking to lease or purchase or?
Come to agreement with the city to use that property?
I want, yeah, I want to?
All of it, right? I mean, not just the area where the dumpster?
Just, just where the dumpster is.
So you're, you are not looking to do anything with the green?
Zero, correct.
The grassy area?
Nothing.
You're not looking to pave that and add parking spots or anything like that?
Nope, I'm just looking to bring my?
So what would you propose to the city? And maybe that's an easier way?
I would propose, let me put it in that corner, lease me the land for a dollar, or next to nothing. It's going to clean up the city, it's going to put my dumpsters off of the asphalt, it's going to be properly built and taken care of and maintained at my cost. And I think if, if you can't commit to, I know it can't be a lifetime lease, I know things happen, but if in 10 years, for some reason, you don't want it there anymore, I think we need to have an answer today or before we approve this on where that would go. I don't want to come 10 years down the line and say, okay, Steve, we need that property, where are you going to put? I mean, might as well do it today, is what I'm saying.
Well, sir, the problem is, I don't think that this council can bind our future councils. I mean, we're already on a 10-year agreement, getting to?
No, no, that, I understand that, so that's why I'm saying, why not today or before we approve this location, come up with an alternative that works forever?
Because that's going to be council's decision in 10 years, and that could be an entirely different body.
No, I'm saying, why not make that decision today?
Where else would it be fitting code-wise? Where else could you put it?
Could we put it on the grass, southernmost portion of that parking lot? If that, if that current location didn't work out, could we put it facing M59? Is that, is that right away through?
Well, it's got to be on a concrete pad by the city.
Sure, we got, we got bulldozers and stuff like that, we can make that, we can square that off.
There's really no difference to that than where he's proposing.
Sure, so I'm taking it as an alternate location. If the, if 10 years goes down the road, and we say, hey, we're going to do something with this parcel, we could put it in the southernmost portion of that lot, on the grass, by squaring it off and doing a little slight engineering within some heavy equipment.
My question was, I guess, directed to Jerry, on his property, where could he put it?
If he wanted to put it behind the coffee shop, as long as it's 10 feet away from the building, okay? It's got to be a minimum of 10 feet away from the building. So he could put it in that back corner, you know, behind the coffee shop. It's, it's aesthetically, it's not going to look good, but it is what it is. He doesn't have much property to deal with as it is, because of the way the property is. You know, he's limited on where he can put it.
And it's important to note that, if you go out there and look right now, it doesn't look good. The city had pretty much just looked the other way for many years with Muldoons and, what was it called before that?
Cactus Jacks.
Cactus Jacks.
Uptown Cafe.
It's just been decades of just letting it, you know, not be in compliance with city code. So Mr. Savage is trying to make it look nice out there. You know, right now, it's just sitting on grass, which is against the code. It's not enclosed, which is against city code. So Mr. Savage is looking for a solution that's going to make that area look better, clean it up a little bit, and bring it into city code.
Again, if you put it behind the coffee shop, that is your property, and then at that point, as long as you pour the pad, you comply to everything, it's yours, we don't revisit it again. Having owned a business next to a food supply, okay, cooking, it stinks like hell in the summertime, your garbage, okay? Any restaurant, it's awful. So if that's where you want to put it next to your building, you're always going to have to keep where you don't have a couple parking spots there anymore, because you're going to have to have it wherever time that dumpster company comes to dump, you can't have cars there, okay?
Correct.
And if it stinks too bad, the city's going to come back to you and say you're going to dump it more often than once a week. Because I'll guarantee, I'll be the one that brings it to you. So I understand you want a permanent solution, but the permanent solution is going to reflect badly against your building, okay? Or against your customers. If they park in that row, and in the summertime, it's rancid, it stinks. There's nothing, and it's not you not dumping it, it's just you've got wasted food there, okay? It's closer for you to dump, okay? So the idea, though, is if we have a 14 by 17 pad, that's 238 square feet, that you're looking to use city property, so maybe it's, I don't know, $238 a year or something, okay? But you've then got city property, it's back here, if we commit to a 10-year deal. And then the worst is, again, if the council comes, I'm not going to be here in 10 years, then you could always put it back on your property. I love the commitment you're making to the city, you're going to be there. But there's a lot of advantage of you not having that dumpster against your building.
Yeah, I agree with you 100%, and I wouldn't want it there. Yeah, I wouldn't want it there either.
But that is your only solution.
During the day, there's, they, it's really nice to see patrons from the coffee shops. He's got a little picnic table there and?
They won't sit there in the summertime when it's hot.
And if there's a dumpster, it kind of ruins that whole aesthetic as well, so.
Okay, so based on, you know, what you've said, and, I mean, just looking at this, and I've thought about this, obviously, many times, I will support, then, let's, let's go to what, let's go back to this proposal. I would just ask for the lease to be minimal. There's no benefit to my business, and I feel like I'm providing value to the city doing this, and I just, it's unused property right now, so just take that into account in terms of trying to lease me that pad that's 14 by 17.
I think that Mr. Savage has been an exceptional new neighbor to the city. He's brought a lot of life, and, I mean, you go in Muldoons in the afternoon, there'd be six people in there. You go in there to Mr. Miguel's at 6:00 PM, there's a 20-minute wait, more, you know?
Well, anyone who tried to come to this meeting tonight, I'm sure they, they saw the difficulty parking their car.
Yeah, so I mean?
It wasn't because of this crowd, it was because of the crowd next door.
I think he's done, I think he's invested a lot of effort and time and money into the city of Utica, which has been, I mean, I hear people talk about it all the time, oh, that new Mr. Miguel's is a guest, you got to go in there. I mean, the food's great, the prices are reasonable, it's a great, the building was an eyesore, to say the least. He's put a ton of money in that place. I'm totally agreeable to making it a very reasonable lease, to make it so that it works for everyone here. So I think if he could agree to a 10-year term at a reasonable rate, you know, that would be, I think that'd be a win-win, because obviously?
Is there a motion in there somewhere?
There's going to be. So, so, Mr. Mayor, sir, I would make a motion to grant an agreement and allow the mayor to enter into agreement, under the, under the watch-wire of the attorney, city attorney, to enter into agreement to allow Mr. Miguel's girl in Cantina to have utilization and the construction of a dumpster as provided in the documentation provided to council today.
And what is the dollar amount on that?
I would suggest the same thing Mr. Savage suggested, $1.
I want to caution against it, because you are allowing a private enterprise to use city properties. So I do think it needs to be a reasonable rate.
It's also setting precedent.
And we do charge for the sidewalk?
Sidewalk cafes, we charge for the use of that road, that the car wash uses. So it's a matter of, if you want to say where it's at, I'm sorry, we are discussing?
I think he was in the middle of a motion.
Yeah, we're trying to get this done. So, okay, not to exceed the, the lease would be $250 a year. That would put a similar compensation for other businesses.
I would?
Actual frontage on the street, where ours is?
Where'd you come up with that number?
Well, we have businesses on the street that have frontage, they have more accessible, a higher value property, frontage on Auburn Road. This is a underutilized, in the rear, vacant alley. So to me, I would say that it was far lesser retail space value than the other spaces on Cat, or on Auburn Road.
If I could also say, it's, the big difference here is this is non-revenue generating, whereas, you know, sidewalk space is revenue generating. A street to a property is indirectly revenue generating. This has nothing to do with revenue generation whatsoever.
So that was my motion.
Well, I don't think you had a, there's a lot of?
I said a 10-year term, $250 a year, and that was stated, that space is designated in the drawing.
All right, so we have a motion on the floor from Councilman Deion.
I'll second it.
Second by Sakura, any discussion from council? Yeah, I have a question, does that include the clause that if a future city council decides to put some development there, that that's? Yeah, there'll be a clause. Okay.
Again, it's precedent setting, we cannot just let you use that property. It's not our property, it's resident property, and we have always abided by it. We can't just give it to you, okay? Because at that point, then I want another piece next to yours, and I'm a resident, no different than you, and I'm actually, I'm paying taxes just like you do. So, again, 250, I said a dollar and all per square foot per year, 238, 250 is negligible. The other option is we turn this all down, you put it on your property, it stinks, it's an eyesore. So is it up, is it worth it to you for $238? Or 250, so you're at $20 in some sense, you know, a month. To have it away from everything, it's in the corner, we're saying it's a 10-year, you could even put another 10-year renewable lease and on top of it, if you wanted, in the motion. Again, subject to, if the property was to be sold for another purpose, council has so many days to renew. And you could then put your dumpster back on your property. So I, I, terms are fine to me, the price is fine to me, it can't be free, it can't be a dollar a year. You've done that dollar a year once before, and it's never going to happen again, so.
And it's within ordinance.
Yeah, so I truly, truly appreciate the input that, and the money that you have invested in the city of Utica, okay? You are an asset, okay? So let's keep the garbage away from everything, we keep precedent, or we, we don't set a precedent. You get to use city property, it's a 10-year lease with maybe another 10-year option on top of it, subject to parcels, you know, possible sale by the city. But I don't think anything's going to happen for a long time, so.
There's nothing in the works.
Yeah, so.
Any further discussion from council? Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Could I say one thing?
Sure.
Could we include in their first right to purchase if there was a sale on that property for me?
I'm, and again, we're looking into the future.
I am, too.
There's nothing in the plans right now, but if, if we wanted to sell that property, it's probably because we were selling everything, even this, right? It's probably because we're trying to put a sale together, we're not going to?
I understand.
We're not going to be marketing that one little strip.
Right, right, I understand.
We're going to be marketing everything, probably all the way to the river.
Right, okay.
And it's not going to be us. When I say we, I mean, our, the people that come, probably several?
People from the future.
Yes.
They took our jobs.
All right, and we were getting ready to take a roll call vote, I believe.
Sakura.
Yes.
Turenzi.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deion.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Mayor Calendrino.
Yes, motion carries. So we have a potential agreement in place. The city attorney will draw that up. If you're in agreement, you know, this isn't binding to you yet, you haven't agreed to it. But the city attorney will get an agreement written up, which, of course, will, you will get to review and with you or your attorney, and if you're not in agreement with the terms, then we can come back to council at a later date.
Okay, and I'm in agreement with everything that's been said, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Great job of your story, by the way.
Yeah. We need you to open later on the first Tuesday of every month, or, I'm sorry, second Tuesday of every month on our council nights, so we can make our way over there for a? for dinner and margaritas.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you. Have a great night. Next on the agenda is the marijuana license award.
No, no.
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 The ordinance.
It's the ordinance.
Ordinance.
Oh, that's right. Next on the agenda is the, well, you know, I'm gonna turn it over to the city attorney, so I don't botch it up.
So, Mayor and Council, when we passed this ordinance earlier this year, we agreed to put two locations within that new area off of Park Avenue, and we were not going to have a buffer with regard to that area, because we had a seven-hundred-foot buffer on Van Dyke because of traffic patterns, and it was a larger stretch. It would be near impossible to get actually two locations in Park Avenue if they have to be seven-hundred feet apart. And it was very clear at the beginning of this ordinance, when we talk about the buffer in fourteen-six-twelve-A-one, but later in the ordinance, when it's talking about actually awarding licenses, was missing the phrase "on Van Dyke shall be seven-hundred feet apart," and that is under fourteen-six-three-one-D. So before we award any licenses, I would like to clean that up by passing this ordinance, and then we can proceed with the next item, which is the award of licenses. I'd be looking for a motion to amend the ordinance as presented.
So moved.
Support.
Motion by Sikora, support by Torenzi. Any discussion from council? Ma'am Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Sikora.
Yes.
Torenzi.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deion.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Mayor Calendrino.
Yes, motion carries.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Now to the marijuana license award. Would you like to take that as well?
Sure.
Oh, okay.
So, Mayor and Council, as you know, you appointed Bob Davis, who's an attorney in the area, does some municipal work. He did scoring systems for, I believe, Pontiac and City of Detroit as a backup score. We gave all the materials to him. The materials were over there for you guys to review. You have the scoring sheets. So we are looking to have council actually award the licenses, and the motion would be motion to award licenses requested in their respective applications to Gallery McComb LLC and Jarrett Ventures Nine LLC, if, that obviously is how you, you know, chosen to want to award these licenses. And then we also would have a motion to approve payment to Davis Listman, PLLC, in the amount of seven thousand, six hundred and eighty-five dollars and fifty cents from GL number one oh one-two-six-six-eight-two-six-zero-one-zero, MFAUTI. Is that only one motion?
No, there's two motions.
Two motions.
And it's written on the packet, if you, it's probably best at this point to repeat the first motion, which is tight.
There'd be motion to award the licenses requested in their respective applications to Gallery McComb LLC and Jarrett Ventures Nine LLC.
So moved.
Motion by Torenzi.
Support.
Support by Sikora. Any discussion from council? Ma'am Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Sikora.
Yes.
Torenzi.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deion.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Mayor Calendrino.
Yes, motion carries.
And then the second motion would be motion to approve payment to Davis Listman, PLLC, in the amount of seven thousand, six hundred and eighty-five dollars and fifty cents from GL number one zero one-two-six-six-eight-two-six-zero-one-zero-dash-MFAUTI.
So moved.
Support.
Motion by Sikora, support by Torenzi. Any discussion from council? Just to be clear, this is the fee for reviewing all the scoring and-
Right, yeah. And just so you know, we actually budgeted ten thousand for that, so this is coming in under budget.
Any further discussion from council? Ma'am Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Sikora.
Yes.
Torenzi.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deion.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Mayor Calendrino.
Yes, motion carries. Thank you, everyone. Have a good night, gentlemen. Next on the agenda is department reports. I'll kick things off. Oh, yeah, we added them, too. All these amendments. We all know you, but could you give us your name, please?
Yes, I'm Jean Pro-Uticallion, once upon a time resident of the city. May I take just a moment of privilege, to, personal privilege, to thank this community for their donation last Saturday to the victims of the hurricane. Those victims were in Tennessee and the Carolinas, and we received a hundred and twenty-five dollars approximately, and I am knowing our club, we will probably match that amount, which will be sent to Lions International in Chicago, which has a disaster fund. And as you probably know, there's probably clubs in all areas. They belong to what we call a chapter. This chapter sends and requests to International. International quickly sends a check to that chapter. It is then forwarded to the members of each club. So that your money that was given to us last Saturday will go for somebody's renewal or help them. So, thank you very much for the City of Utica's participation in this event. Thank you so much.
And these were funds, you had a bucket out at the Halloween event, right?
Yes, yes. And it was really, people dropped a dollar, you know, two dollars, five dollars. It was, it was very, very heartwarming. So thank, thank their community. Thank you. All right, my quest, request here is permission to put up our steak and shrimp fundraiser, which will be on October eighteenth at the American Legion. And we need as many people to come, because this is our big fundraiser, and it pays for all these things that we do to give back to the city, et cetera. And so, we need help to get advertising. So this is our request for the signage. Thank you.
And where, where were you hoping to put these signs?
Well, we had them on Han before, and then we put one over by, in Van Dyke, by Han and Van Dyke, and then we put one generally down here on Chaos at the end of Auburn there, so, so that many people could see it as possible, okay?
So is that three signs?
Two.
Just two? At Han and Chaos?
Yeah, Van Dyke and, yeah, and then Auburn and Chaos, so.
In Auburn and Chaos.
Yeah.
What time does it kick off?
It kicks off at five-thirty.
Okay. And what's the recommended donation?
It's actually, tickets are forty-five dollars each.
Okay, thank you.
See, we're getting a little promotion here.
Yeah.
Well, I'm certain Mrs. Torenzi, Mrs. Torenzi has tickets, because I know we sent her something. I hope she still has.
Appreciate you buying those for us. Thank you, Ms. Torenzi, for buying that for everyone.
Oh, yeah. That would be you, Tom.
So, we would be looking for a motion to approve the Utica Lions sign request?
So moved.
Support.
Motion by Deion, support by Robinson. Any discussion from council? Maybe one thing we didn't ask is when would the signs be going up? How far in advance?
Probably this weekend, like a couple weeks, if they don't mind.
October eighteenth, so it'd be just standing.
Saturday before.
It'd be a whole week.
It's coming up faster than I realize.
All right, any further discussion from council? Ma'am Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Sikora.
Yes.
Torenzi.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deion.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Mayor Calendrino.
Yes, motion carries.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Good luck.
He's gonna drop them off at my house this week. I know you were coming, I would've brought everything.
Have a good night, folks.
Thank you.
All right, now we can move, I'm through all the amendments now, so it should've gone much smoother. Department reports, I'll kick things off. I'd like to just say that the Nightmare on Auburn event was a huge success. Big, big thanks to Connect McComb, who was our partner with this event. Really, it couldn't have happened without all the hard work they did. Also, our own DPW, fire, police, and Parks and Rec were instrumental in getting it off the ground. A lot of people put in a lot of hours of work, so we thank them all. Business owners, I know, you know, we inconvenienced them by blocking the roads and making it hard for their employees to get there. Hopefully, they all had fun and made a little bit of money as well. And finally, I'd like to thank the vendors. We had a really great variety of vendors this year. I heard a lot of compliments. If you look on social media, I don't remember that many compliments about the vendors last year. There were quite a few people that went out of their way to say, you know, they really enjoyed the variety of things that were available. So, it was really nice event, and again, big thanks to Connect McComb. Next, I'd like to let everyone know that we're gonna have a limited road closure tomorrow, from nine to nine fifteen. It's an MDOT initiated request. They're putting in some fiber optic cables, maybe Chief Kaluzny will elaborate, so I'll just leave it at that. I know Councilman Ryan had something that he wanted to bring up?
I, yes. So with our Christmas tree lighting that's coming up, the Utica Firefighters Foundation is gonna be hosting again our stuff and ambulance drive, will be placing drop boxes in City Hall and the library, as well as we, every year we always partner with all of our restaurants and bars in the downtown area, set up some drop boxes, usually down in there, still working on the process as far as which locations it will be at. And they, usually with the bars and businesses, they, we try to stir up some competition in between them, see who can receive a trophy, who receives the most amount of donations. For our stuff and ambulance drive, all this is, all goes towards the Marines Toys for Tots program. This is the fourth year that I'm doing it. Donations are going to conclude on December fourteenth, the night of the Christmas tree lighting.
Excellent. Look forward to it. This year's winner was Steampunk, I think, right?
Yes.
So, you gotta really tell them they gotta hold on to that trophy.
You gotta hold on to the trophy, but, you know, Mr. Miguel's is now gonna be in the running. I know last year they couldn't participate, but-
It's gonna be tough.
We shall see what happens.
Excellent. Thank you, Councilman Ryan. Anyone else from council that would like to report anything? All right, nothing from planning tonight, nothing from assessing Mr. Hicks. Anything to report from buildings?
The only thing I'd like to do is, is let the public know with, I know it's election season, so all the election signs, they cannot be put in the right of way, but beyond that, once elections are over, other businesses or people like to put their advertisement signs in the right of way. I do pick them up, and I usually throw them out. I won't hold on to them, because we get so many of them. I just wanna remind the residents and businesses, please do not put them in the right of way. The other item I'd like to bring to everyone's attention, especially the residents, is there is a building code that says your house addresses must be a minimum of four-inch numbers. And, you know, it's, it's been like this for a while, and it's hard when any of us, whether it's police, fire, myself, we go to look for an address and we can't see addresses. So, if you are about to change your address, or change the looks of it or something, remember that there are four-inch, the requirement is, they must be four-inch numbers. It's not supposed to be spelled out, it's supposed to be numerals, and they also are supposed to be contrasting to the backdrop. Other than that, we're looking good.
All right, thanks, sir. Ms. Francis, report from library. Thank you. Chief Wilson?
Yeah, Mayor. Mayor and Council, before you, I have a request to pay a bill for our inspectors' Mobilize yearly subscription. It's our fire inspectors' software and all the codes that they use, and our yearly subscription is due. I didn't put the amount down, it was twenty-eight?
Ninety-six, twenty-six.
Yeah. And that would be out of the general ledger account, one oh one-three-three-six-seven-three-one-zero-one-zero, when it was budgeted for.
So moved.
Motion by Ryan.
Support.
Support by Deion. Any discussion from council? Ma'am Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Sikora.
Yes.
Torenzi.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deion.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Mayor Calendrino.
Yes, motion carries.
Yeah, and the fire guys really enjoyed being out there, and they threw a boot out in front of the place, and they raised, oh, two hundred and seventeen dollars just by having a boot out for disaster relief.
Yeah, it's great.
I got the check here, it's going to the Red Cross, so.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Tell them thank you.
Yep, no problem.
Chief Kaluzny.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The first item I have for you is the radio tower base engineering. This was engineering work that I had completed to design the base of our new dispatch tower. And actually, this was approved back in April two thousand and twenty-four. Unfortunately, the engineering and the invoice was not completed until after the fiscal year. So what I'm looking for is just a budget amendment for something that was already approved, to go ahead and get this bill paid and submitted. So I'd be requesting a budget amendment to fiscal year twenty twenty-five Drug Law Enforcement Fund Engineering Expense. That's GL two sixty-five-dash-three-zero-one-dash-eight-two-one-dash-zero-zero-zero, in the amount of fifty-five hundred dollars.
So moved.
Support.
Motion by Ryan, support by Sikora. Any discussion? Ma'am Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Sikora.
Yes.
Torenzi.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deion.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Mayor Calendrino.
Yes, motion carries.
Thank you, Mayor Council. The second item I have is radar unit purchase. Our current vehicles, the fixed radar systems that are in, four of the five vehicles have radars that go back to twenty fourteen, so they're actually ten-year-old equipment that our officers operate. As they get old, they get on calibration, they get on use, and they start having error messages and stuff, and that's the last thing you want when you're, you know, enforcing traffic, is to have errors and problems in your accuracy and stuff. I was approved to sell our last Ford Explorer. That was the vehicle that we were gonna give to City Hall. They graciously gave it back to us, so with that, I was able to recoup seven thousand, six hundred dollars in the sale of that vehicle. That was obviously a revenue that I didn't have anticipated for this year, so I'd like to use a portion of that money to go ahead and purchase two radar units for the vehicle. We did a look at different radar systems, and we evaluated three different systems. We decided to go with the custom, custom signals Eagle Three radar system. So what I'd be looking for is a approval to purchase the two custom Eagle Three radar systems and have them installed at Canfield Equipment. We have used Synergy. Canfield Equipment actually came in a little lower, so I figured, let's, let's try a different outlet and see how they do with the upholding of our vehicles. So I actually have three motions here, and the first one would be request a budget amendment to the Police Department's fiscal year twenty-five budget revenue sale of fixed assets. That's one oh one-dash-three-zero-one-dash-six-nine-three-dash-triple-zero, by seven-six-hundred dollars, and that's the revenue from the vehicle that we're using.
So moved.
Support.
Motion by Ryan, support by Torenzi. Any discussion from council? Ma'am Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Sikora.
Yes.
Torenzi.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deion.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Mayor Calendrino.
Yes, motion carries.
My second motion would be to request to amend the police vehicles' equipment GL, and that's one oh one-dash-three-zero-one-dash-nine-eight-three-dash-triple-zero, by five thousand, five hundred dollars.
So moved.
Support.
Motion by Ryan, support by Torenzi. Any discussion? Ma'am Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Sikora.
Yes.
Torenzi.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deion.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Mayor Calendrino.
Yes, motion carries.
And the final motion is to request motion to approve the purchase of two custom signals Eagle Three radars and have them installed and performed at Canfield Equipment.
So moved.
Support.
Motion by Ryan, support by Terencey. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Sakura.
Yes.
Terencey.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deanne.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Mayor Calendrino.
Yes, motion carries.
Mayor and Council, thank you for that. I know the guys are gonna be looking forward to the new radar system. So we're planning on putting them in the vehicles with the least mileage. So, and try and balance on our fleet there. So, definitely looking forward to it. Thank you for that. Just some, some updates, as the mayor mentioned. MDOT has kind of mandated and instituted some, some road closures. So we do have a road closure coming up tomorrow. We will be closing down east and westbound at 59 at 9:00 AM. The anticipated closure is no more than 15 minutes. It's actually mandated by MDOT that they can exceed 15 minutes. The company that's performing the work, they're running fiber optic lines across the roadways. The last one, I-94, took about six minutes. So, in six minutes, they got the line ran and they were able, we were actually able to open it up. So, that will be happening tomorrow. We have the officers on standby, they're gonna be diverting traffic. So, just wanna let people know, tomorrow's commute, maybe leave a little early, make sure you get through before 9:00.
What are the eastern and western limits of the closure?
Yep, so it's gonna be, so as, as you're coming eastbound, we'll be diverting people onto Mount Road and up and around. Unfortunately, as we're coming westbound, there isn't a real good way to navigate four lanes of traffic. So we'll actually just be kind of shutting the roadway down there for the temporary.
Is that at Van Dyke?
Actually, it's gonna be a little bit, a little bit passive impact. Some people will be able to go in turnaround, enter on Chaos, but it's probably safer just to kind of lock the load down there, unfortunately. We are, I was just contacted late this evening about another MDOT closure that's gonna occur on Auburn Road. This one luckily is not going to fully close the road. We're gonna be doing one lane at a time. And this also involves kind of fiber optic lines. This one actually has to go underneath Auburn Road there. The company that's, that's performing is gonna be an all-day, kind of a nine to three is what their permit states. But they will be closing one lane one-way and be able to divert traffic into the center turn lane. So it shouldn't have too much of an impact on, on traffic. They're gonna be manning it, they're gonna have people out there with flags and cones. So it's, it's not gonna be too severe, but unfortunately, another, another closure added on.
And that's gonna be over by Utica Road, right?
That's correct, yes. On Auburn Road and just over here between the Davis Bridge and kind of over at John and John's.
Is that also tomorrow?
Thursday or Friday. They just reached out to me this evening, so I may have time to kind of reach out. We will be posting something on our Facebook page. I know the mayor will forward that on the city's pages as well, on the exact days and times of the closure. And with, with these closures, we've had a number of closures within our small little city. Lot of, lot of bottlenecks, a lot of cutting to the subs. Just wanna ask the, the public to make sure that you leave plenty of time as you're traveling. Accidents have definitely increased along with a lot of calls in the subdivision. People running their lights, people speeding, people running stop signs. So just really ask the residents to leave a little early and please try and be mindful of the traffic. I know we likes the traffic, but we definitely don't wanna see people, you know, little kids, vehicles get damaged out there.
Thank you, Chief. Mr. Diamond, DPW report.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Everybody's doing well. I have one item on the agenda today, and it is for the Pioneer Park Pavilion. The contract completion date was originally October 4th. Obviously, that has passed. We've been doing everything that can be and could have been done. So work has been, been accomplished. But there were delays in the pavilion itself. And then with that delay, we needed to wait for that to come in for the footings and everything. So I'm just looking for a contract extension from the October 4th, 2024, until April 15, 2025. We put it on a little bit longer. The pavilion is due to come in in November. So we're still hoping for an end of the year, depending on weather. But we figured we'd hold it off till April. That way, we wouldn't have to come back to council if we have to do it any longer. So, the motion for city council to approve the formal request from premier group associates to extend the contract for Pioneer Park Pavilion project with a new completion date of April 15, 2025.
So moved.
Support.
Motion by Terencey, support by Sakura. Any discussion from council? I know that'll, even if it goes all the way to April 15th, it'll still be before the Puppy Parade, so that's, that's good news.
I know, I made sure, I made sure that was gonna happen.
Any further discussion? Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Sakura.
Yes.
Terencey.
Yes.
O'Donnell.
Yes.
Deanne.
Yes.
Ryan.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Mayor Calendrino.
Yes, motion carries.
All right, just notes, just updates on our projects. The North Point and Van Dyke projects through our L. Anthony Construction, who is our contractor. The insurance corrections that we've been waiting on have been submitted to HRC and they're being reviewed to make sure they are ready to go. We're planning on doing a recon meeting hopefully this week with them. Their tentative start date is mid-June, October. And the contract completion date right now is currently November 27. So once they get in here, they'll be hammering out the sidewalks, the re-paving of North Point in the areas that the money that was allocated for and the median on Van Dyke.
So we get to close lanes out in Van Dyke again, right?
Yeah. That'll be a little congested there, for sure.
It will.
Lead service line replacements. The draft agreement has been completed and it should be getting, we should be getting email very soon on that, Mayor and city attorney. That way, we can okay that and get that moving forward. Hopefully, we'll have that for next meeting to be approved and they can start on that. Pioneer Park, which I just said with the agenda, if you have noticed, the hole's been dug. It's been ready to go. Luckily, we didn't have any issues with the ground there going five deep, five yard, five feet deep. Didn't hit any garbage. Great news, that's been easy cost with the project down. And then the plumber did start working on the line from the comfort station over to the pavilion itself or our host ficket. And so that's, everything, like I said, is going good. Whatever has been promised hands-on besides the pavilion itself has been going on and it's been going very smoothly with this group. Davis Lift Station, both pumps are in, both pumps are working. I know this has been a long project, waiting well before I got here, so that's all good news. We have had a couple bugs with the sensor and the panel, but nothing that has stopped the pumps from working. So, next week, well, I should say this week, I like to call it the interior decorating for it should be done because they're gonna epoxy the floor and repaint the interior of the well right now. So, that's all good news. Once it's done painted, it'll be done. Detroit Pump has been great. They train their guys on the panel itself. The issues that we've had, I've been able to contact them and he's been able to either plug in remote and be able to fix it. We actually had one today that we got quite a few calls on it. And the panel itself, and he was able to walk our guys through it. So, that's great news. Sewer line project, the completion date now is scheduled for October 18th. The last one that is needed is the one over by the gas station and Hydro Pros. We will not have to close any lanes down for that. That's the one that we had to break and we had to prove the money to get it repaired. That's the last one to be lined. And luckily, we do not have to close down the lane on Van Dyke for that bypass. Point inspections are complete. The guys really, really kick butt on these. We had 243 to do and hammering it up very well. They, the restoration has been, been very good. They've been trying to keep up as they went, so the guys did great. I can't, I can't say more than that, then, then they really kick butt on this. I'm working right now on the report that's due to Eagle by October 16th. We should be good to go. I'm sure there'll probably be a couple emails here back and forth of something, but, you know, we had to dig up the, the, at the curb stops and need to take pictures, three feet to the main and three feet to the residence to show if the line was copper or galvanizer led. Luckily, out of the 243 that we did, there was only one, I believe, that was galvanized. So, so we don't have any added more replacements out of the ones that Eagle chose for us to inspect. So that's good news, too. Along with the point inspections, our treasurer, Phil, has submitted all our TMF grant that we approved for, which was paying our guys for doing that. We got that grant, I think it was last, it was either one meeting ago or two meetings ago. So that paperwork was all sent in for anything that started October 1st of 2023 up until October, September 30th of 2024. So, everything was sent in. Phil, Becky, and myself, it was a lot of work, but we were able to get that all taken care of. The Happy Dog Day Care Dog Weight Station that was donated was installed at Heritage Park on the bike path. And the sign that was approved was also installed. That just came in last week. We did get our water and sewer push hammer delivered last Thursday. Had training on that, so we'll be looking to, you know, put that into rotation. That would only help us and the residents out a lot. So I thank you again for approving that purchase. We did have MS4 compliant training today. I took this training last year when I got hired. I needed to do it as the superintendent, but we needed to have half our crew also be trained as an observer and as an inspector. Five guys went through it today, it was a free training, but now we are compliant with that. The Ferndale purchases, and we are expected about getting them next week. So that's good news. And had great news that we had a resident on Grant Park donate a Christmas tree for us this year. So, two in a row, we'll have a donated Christmas tree, so.
Very nice. It's a beauty, too.
It is, it's gorgeous, yes.
Is it in front of their house? Is it in front of their house, they're taking it down?
It's on side, it's good access where we can get to it without any issues, so.
Wow.
It's very nice.
That's great.
I'll, I'll wait to say his name until it's actually done. Very, I'm glad that he called me and I think he called and spoke with Becky and Becky transferred over to me. So I went saw it on Wednesday last week and the gorgeous tree took a big sense to the mayor, so.
Perfect.
All good news.
Excellent, thank you, Mr. Diamond. We have no report from the treasurer tonight. Madam Clerk.
Lot of notes from DPW, sorry, I'm still catching up on that. Mayor and council, I will just update you that the deputy clerk and I have sent out many absentee ballots. I can't, a thousand, out of just over 4,100 voters. I think that's a pretty great number so far. We have four weeks from today until the election. We have 23% of our ballots are returned, the absentee, which I feel really good about. Early voting begins on October 26th, two locations in Sterling Heights. I encourage the residents to either take their absentee ballots there to tabulate them or just walk in and get a ballot and vote it during those nine days of early voting. And I believe those times are nine to five every day, including the weekends, so. And then also, from the clerk's office, business registration renewals are going out to all of the businesses in the city this week. And they are this year going out for the first time via email, trying to save on paper and postage. So, we did let them all know last year that we were beginning that. So, we're excited and a little nervous. But those will be due by December 31st. So, that is what the clerk's office has.
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you.
Parks and Rec.
I too just wanna say thank you to Connect McComb for the event that we had this weekend, the Nightmare on Auburn. It was a, a great time. I, I wanna thank Connect McComb, all the volunteers that came out to help. And the mayor gives everybody credit, but thank you to the mayor because he was very instrumental as well as to getting this, this event together. So I just, and of course, our fire, police, DPW, these guys are the best and we seconded on. Just, just wanna say thank you to everybody because it's, it's our second annual and we're looking forward to many, many years.
Thank you. Yeah, within, what was it, $27?
And we were $27.13 under budget.
That's great. Nothing from historic or the city attorney? Communication from the public? Is there anyone that would like to address council on anything not on the agenda?
Anyone.
We're talking to you, Mr. Cuttington. All right.